All right, I call the meeting to order. With the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. Uh, there is apparently no public comment, so go to the consent agenda, authorization for payroll bills for the town, general assembly, road, uh, road department, sewer, and then my reports to social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, and financial. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or any, any, uh, any, anything need to be discussed regarding, regarding the consent agenda?
I got a question.
Okay.
Now on the grant, uh, branch pickup.
Yep.
Isn't that supposed to be for storm damage and stuff?
No, I think we just have, is this, is it a month later or do we have to storm as well too?
My understanding is a month long.
Once a month. We've been doing it once a month.
And how come our, uh, landscaper, whatever you want to call it, tree guy?
Yeah.
How come you charge us an extra eight hundred dollars more?
How come why, what, what?
There was on that bill, he was talking about on the, on the landscapers bill, the monthly fee is just a standard. But then he says because of storm damage, he charged an extra eight hundred bucks last month, July.
Right, right. Cause he picked up some things that weren't necessarily always picked up. He picked those up, the, uh, them and would pay for it.
So that's a, well, uh.
That's your question?
You're gonna like a flat fee?
I can't really guess. But would you, would you want him to leave the stuff that he normally wouldn't take?
No, I'm, I'm just wondering why it's so much more.
I think the reason is, is that he, he gets, he, we pay him for a, a basic pickup. And because this was substantially more, he charged more, and we chose not to challenge that per se. Cause he did do considerably, considerably more than what the, the basic contract says.
Yeah, but the last guy never did that.
Okay, I, that I don't know.
I'm just wondering if you guys got a contract for it yet?
I don't, I don't know that that's absolutely true, that he didn't charge us more, the previous gentleman.
Well, I don't remember ever seeing it.
I don't know, can't tell you.
All right, we'll have to, we'll have, we'll have to look at that. I, I understood that with the storm, there were some additional things that he had to do, so we, we covered that. Um, but I don't know, I don't, beyond that, I don't, I don't know. I'd, we'd have to look at the, we'd have to look more closely at, at the bill and what he actually charged. But I mean, that's a good catch if it, if there is an issue, and that's what the auditors are supposed to do. So we'll look into that, we'll look into that a little further um, in terms of whether it was, it was, it was the legitimate additional charge or not. Um, any other questions or any other issues?
No.
Okay, yeah, if, um, and is there a, roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, um, let's see here, discussion and action on the approval of minutes. Um, we can put these together, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, regular board meeting amended, and the July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or any discussion regarding the minutes? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, we have a presentation from the, uh, our auditors. If you guys, uh, introduce yourself and then go ahead and provide, provide us with your presentation, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, my name is Chuck Osborn. I'm an audit manager at Whipley. We're the financial statements auditors for the township. Tonight, I'd like to give a brief summary of how we conduct our audit and describe the sections of the township's report. The report starts on page one with the auditor's, independent auditor's report. This leads with our opinion. Uh, for the past fiscal year, FY twenty twenty-three, uh, we gave an unmodified opinion. In plain terms, this means we gave a clean opinion. Following the auditor's report, there are the government-wide financial statements. These statements give a bigger picture view of the township's resources. They incorporate not just the day-to-day accounting, but also long-term items like capital assets, long-term debt, and pensions. Following the bigger-picture governmental statements, we have the governmental fund statements, and these tie directly to the day-to-day accounting at the township. Um, these are based on the current financial resources perspective, current meaning that it aligns with the fiscal year and the budgetary basis, um, the budgetary perspective rather. And looking on page seven, this shows the governmental funds' results for the year, the revenues received, the expenditures dispersed. And I did want to notice at the bottom, a note at the bottom, that the township maintains a healthy fund balance, which is important because it gives management flexibility in cases of uncertainty. Uh, following the fund financial statements, there are notes. The notes give further detail, context, and explanation of some of the items in the financial statements themselves. Um, these give further explanations of cash and deposits, capital assets, long-term debt, pensions. Uh, for example, uh, we have a cash and investments note on page fifteen. And at the bottom of that note, we do note that the township's deposits and bank balances were entirely insured or collateralized. Following the notes, there are further breakdown, uh, broken-out schedules of the fund financial statements in greater detail of the budget-to-actual items of all the activity for the year. This gives a chance to see specific line items and the budget-to-actual section. Our audit is conducted when we start, assess the risk of, you know, the risk of financial, uh, uh, material misstatement on the financial statements. When we assess risk, we're looking at things like what's changed year to year? Have there been significant changes in accounting personnel? Are there any new operating segments? New sources of revenue, things like that? Um, we also look at the internal controls, which are the policies and procedures that the township has in place to mitigate such risks. Um, then our fieldwork happens when we visit the township for a couple days. We have a list that we send to Erica, and she provides us items that we use in our audit. Uh, following our fieldwork, we review to make sure we followed our procedures correctly, and the report, once drafted, goes to our internal inspection. And once it passes quality control, we issue the report. In addition to the report, we also have, uh, the separate handout to the report, the required communication letters. Um, this includes our management letter. This is an opportunity for us to address anything that isn't required by our standards to address, but room for improvement, if any. Um, we had no items that we noted in this year's audit. And this packet also includes the communication with those charged with governance, which is a communication to the board addressing certain topics related to our audit. Uh, for example, if we encountered any difficulties from management during the audit, this would be an opportunity for us to identify what the difficulties were. And I'm happy to report there were no such difficulties in our audit this year. And finally, the annual financial report has been filed with the Illinois Comptroller's Office, and all state filings are complete. At this point, I would be happy to address any questions from the board.
Are there any questions?
No.
I'm very pleased that we have a, another clean report. I think this says a lot for, um, our financial, uh, manager, Erica, and Paul, administrator, and, um, I want to thank, uh, thank you guys for, uh, for taking care of us. This is important for us to be transparent and to be good fiduciaries for our, our, the taxpayers. So this is a great report, and we appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you.
Okay. If not, we will approve this in new business. So at this particular time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is the reports, elected official reports. We'll start with the assessor.
Uh, you have my written report. Um, there's really nothing to add to that, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions for the assessor?
No.
Nope. Everybody had their taxes appealed?
Mm-hmm.
Not, talked to Connie afterwards? She's got, she's got an in over there. She'll take care of it. She guarantees it.
We won't be open for board review for another, we estimate it would be two to, two and a half months.
Okay.
So there are no appeals being filed right now. The county did just last week send out another round for the senior freezes, primarily because they didn't the first time around. There was this screw-up with their mailing. So we are getting a few calls of seniors, uh, and coming in and filing for their exemptions. But we've gotten used to their mailings being flawed.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Um, clerk?
Okay, I have a written report. Um, there's three FOIA's, and, um, I just want to mention, um, regarding the agency grant committee, the applications should be going out to the agencies this month. And we have a new community member on the committee. His name is Steve Grizzik. Some of you are familiar with him, so I think he'll be a great addition. And preparation for the Elk Grove Parade on the sixteenth of September is coming along.
I would, um, would like to, um, with her report, I would like to get, just to get this a formal, for a, appointment to the committee for Steve Grizzik, um, if I get a motion to, um, for the board to approve his appointment to the committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, before I have a vote, could you explain a little bit more Steve is and everything?
Yeah, um, he is a senior project manager at Dearborn National, lives in Elk Grove, married, two sons, um, involved in his church soccer, I think Boy Scouts in the past. Um, I know him from the local political organization. Some other people do too, so.
Okay, good. All right, and who is our other representative, uh, civilian representative on the board right now?
We only have one, because Dave was, and then he became a trustee.
Okay, so we need to, we need to find another.
Find another one.
So, uh, once again, we have, um, we need to find a, a second, uh, resident member for the, uh, for the agency review. It's a very seasonal situation, uh, but it's also a very significant committee, and that, it's the committee that allocates or recommends the allocation of, of, of grant money to, um, to our, to other agencies that we work with. Um, and I think it's also a, um, it's also, these are agencies that are very important partners for us as well too. So if anyone has any recommendations for us to touch base with, please let Sue Ellen know, and she'll follow up. And we'd like to get an additional resident, uh, on the committee before, uh, before your, your first meetings.
Yeah, which is mid-November probably.
Okay. So let Sue Ellen know, or if you can't get a hold of her, let me know. Okay, um, anything, any other questions for the clerk?
No.
Do we want to do a roll call or voice phone?
No, I have to do mine first, though.
Oh, sorry. I meant for Steve, though.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Um, so I, we have a first and a second, uh, for the, um, appointment of Steve Grizzik to the, uh, to the, uh, the committee. Um, we do a roll call.
Okay. Uh, trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, supervisor's, uh, report. Um, just to, to talk about the departments a little bit right now, the, um, uh, youth, uh, the adult and family counseling, we did have a therapist, um, resign. Um, and, um, and I, I, I was not surprised. I, I felt this was something that may be coming. Um, the, uh, the, uh, it's left us in a little bit of a bind in that Carmen is on, um, a, uh, on leave right now. I guess, that's, I guess that's military talk, but, but she's on vacation or, or personal time. Is it, uh, she's doing personal time? So we have, um, the rest of the staff picking up, um, a, a much heavier load at this particular stage. That said, we have a, uh, a, a offer out to a, um, a, a, a new therapist. She's experienced, um, and was, uh, look, it was in the private sector before, but is looking, uh, to have a, um, a job that is a little bit more stable in, in terms of its, its requirements, uh, cause she has kids, young kids. Um, so it's a unique opportunity for us. It's often very difficult to find therapists that are particularly experienced therapists. Um, she will, she is working on her clinical, um, certification. We will, she will complete that with us. So hopefully, um, this will, will be finalized, and she will start in September. Um, we also are in touch through a temp agency with another potential therapist, a male, which is, which is actually, would be good to have a, a male therapist. Some, some, um, of our residents prefer to have a male, uh, as their, as their counselor. Um, so that would, uh, that would help us in terms of, um, uh, in terms of having a little more diverse group of therapists. Furthermore, the first, the first therapist we were talking about, who the contract's out to, um, she does speak Urdu. So that's, that's the Indian, the primary Indian dialect, and that would be, uh, very positive for us as well too. Um, so we're, we'll, we'll keep you informed as to how that goes. I feel very comfortable that, um, uh, the, uh, the one we have the contract out to, the woman, that will, will, will be completed, and we'll have her on board. I'm not sure with the, the temporary, uh, agency, the gentleman there, how that's going to play out yet, but hopefully it does. So at that point, we will be fully staffed and actually have added a therapist then. We'll have one more therapist than we had before. Um, hopefully that will be able to dramatically reduce our waiting list. If they're each able to carry a load of fifteen to seventeen clients, uh, that will get us back, um, to where the waiting list will be pretty well gone. Uh, and that's sort of our goal here, to, to proceed with that. Um, the demand for therapy has increased, um, along with a lot of other social service needs. Post-COVID, um, I, I'm, you know, I've, I've variety, the change in our demographics here, some of the economic conditions that the, uh, that our area's in at this point. Um, but we've seen, we've seen increased demand across the board. And this is one area that particularly has picked up. And the word may be getting around as well too, of the, the services that we provide, the fact that, uh, it's, there's no charge. This is a, uh, a, a service that's provided to the residents with no cost, and that is a real benefit for some families and individuals. Okay, um, on youth services, um, we have been, um, we have been in touch with District fifty-nine, um, and beginning to talk to them a little bit about what their needs are uh, from a youth services point of view, in terms of the, the programs that'd be most beneficial to them, and also working with them in terms of, um, of coordinating with them, the programs, where they're offered and when they're offered, um, so that it will be a more structured process, um, where we will at, maybe at the beginning of the year, indicate to them, here's the programs we have available, here's the things we can do, and then they will work with us to say, okay, here's where we'd like to have it done, how much, how much time can you give us, and here's where we'd like the programs to be, to be held, that, where we like them done, and what we'd like, what, what the program is and where we'd like to have it done. Um, Renee, uh, uh, she will continue to work her programs, her onsite programs, but we'll, we will hopefully be getting the, um, the, um, school programs more structured and more directly addressing the needs as defined by the schools. Uh, with, with youth services too, where the construction is continuing in terms of the community, youth services community room, um, they made some project back there. The bathroom continues to be built. They've cut, they've cut through the walls and put the door, uh, door frames in for an office for them back there, as well as storage. So that's, I don't think, is the floor gone in yet? Uh, I still got a, a ways to go there, but that's proceeding, um, that's moving forward at this particular sta, stage. And I, I think it's going to be a very nice facility for youth services. They're going to have a, a program room with a, with a floor that's, uh, sort of that rubberized, uh, uh, all-purpose floor. They'll have a bathroom there. We'll put technology in there for them to use, a whiteboard, things like that. Uh, they'll have storage there. They'll have, um, access directly out to the, uh, to the challenge course and the bike safety, and their offices will be back there as too. And the benefit for us, for us also is that opens up room where youth services now, that can be used for now, increase, the increased number of therapists. They can keep them, and that's a area that is a little more secluded, which lends itself to therapy sessions. So that's, uh, that's on youth services. On, um, on, on the buses, um, everything's fine there. Um, we, we are beginning to think about a part-time bus driver, um, simply because, we need to have three drivers riding, driving most of the time, and if one takes, uh, vacation or personal time, um, it, it would be advantageous to us to have a part-time driver that we could call on. Now, can we find one? I don't know, because it's very difficult finding bus drivers right now, and, and I don't know if, if there's any that really went part-time, but that's where we're beginning to pay a little more attention to that and, uh, check that out. And then we're, we're going to retire, when are we retiring the buses, Paul?
What's that?
What buses are retiring and when are we retiring them?
You mean the two that were from old?
Yeah, the old buses. When are we retiring them?
Well, it's on the list of surplus properties.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So the, just two? Yeah, okay. So we were talking about retiring one. We're going to retire two. One really needs to be retired. I mean, we can't even trade it in hardly anywhere. The other one, um, it's at a point where we would, um, where we would, we want to, we, we've upgraded our buses at this stage. We've got as many buses as we need, and now we want to create a, um, a, um, a, a cycle for replacement, a capital reserve fund too that, that, that reflects that, um, so that now we keep the, um, we keep the buses from getting too old. We're, we're, we're turning them on a regular basis, and, uh, for safety reasons as well as just for, um, for, um, for, um, accessibility reasons as well too, things change. Um, and you'll see that, you'll see that when we get to the surplus items. Um, and then the last thing is, is, uh, in the social services side, um, everything's going very, very well there. Demand there is significantly higher as well too. I think our senior services programs are expanding nicely. Um, they're trying a few new things, including a trip for seniors to, uh, Woodfield. Um, they're, um, it, just adding additional services and see how they work, if the demand is there and if it makes sense for the program, where, programs we're developing. And if it does, if there's demand, we'll continue. If there's not, we'll, 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 we'll round it, we'll round out the programs where, where it's needed and where there's, where there's not, it's not being provided either to the amount needed or not being provided by other government agencies. And, and that's, that's in our wheelhouse anyway, too. Uh, we are looking, uh, they are talking to, um, a couple of the hospitals to see if we can get maybe a nurse here once a month or twice a month, and they would set up appointments, wellness appointments. And this is focused on the seniors, but doesn't have to be the seniors. And they would do wellness checks, blood, uh, blood pressure, you know, just general checks, make, to check on their, their health and make sure that, um, and, and it may broaden out, but that would be initially, initially appointments for wellness to make sure that everything is, is tracking well for, 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 for individuals. Um, with the, um, the, um, other thing they're doing is they're in discussions with, um, I think it's Suburban Behavioral Hospital to have them come in once a month to do a, um, um, appointments for, um, legal matters. Uh, we had talked about that before and how there's a, a need for that. Well, there seems to be more and more of a need. Um, we already have a, um, a group come in, like, twice a year to do wills and POAs, powers of attorneys, make it available. This would be something more general legal assistance or referrals. Um, and this is a, what's nice about this is this is an agency or a hospital, um, um, group that would come in and provide this, a legal organization tied in with the hospital group that would come in, that, where we wouldn't, we wouldn't be taking the responsibility for it. We would arrange for it to be done here and provide the facilities. And I think Mount Prospect does it once a month, and then if we did it once a month, we could do it two weeks apart, and they'd have two options in that regard. So we're trying to pursue that as well too. We're fleshing out, I think you're seeing us fleshing out some of these areas of, of, of programs that we provide, where we're, you know, some of them are, 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 are pretty well-established, but there's a little tweaking that we can do here and there, whether it's adding a psych, with psychiatrists like we did, or adding more therapists. Youth services, you know, I mean, if, if we kind of restructure things and we find that the, um, that there is increased demand from the schools, maybe then we'll have to add additional, you know, facilitators or so. Um, in the social services, particularly on the senior citizen side, we're beginning to build out those programs as well too, and filling in where there's either holes or where, um, there still is a demand despite what's out there. And we're the most capable group for doing this. I mean, this is our court competency, while most of the others don't, don't have that. Um, so then I think the next thing to do is just, construction overall is slow. I thought by now we'd have that done back there, but I guess there's two issues. I think one, they had a contract with the public schools of Chicago. I think this is what it is, and they had a deadline, um, or, or significant penalties. And so, guess what? We, we, we were put on the back burner for a little bit. Um, and then now I think they're just in general having labor issues, getting enough people. Uh, there is progress, but it's much slower, um, outside, in particular outside, not so much inside, but outside. So we're keeping our eye on that and, and continue to push to get that done. Uh, the website is, is near completion. Um, uh, we should be able to get a, in the next month, get a demonstration. Um, and I'd like to try to get a demonstration for the board as well too, which you'll see, and get, maybe get a little bit of feedback from you guys, though at that point it'll be tweaking. Don't ask to redo the whole thing, or I'll kill you. And, uh, and, um, and, and following the website being set up, we have talked, uh, to Elk Grove Village in cooperating with them for, um, working on setting up a, uh, employment site. Um, as I just mentioned, we're, we want to shift more to the driver of our services being, um, posting the avail, job availabilities and working with the, the, um, the businesses, particularly the businesses here in the industrial parks here of, uh, Mount Prospect and Elk Grove, where they can post on that site, and, uh, then they pull it off, and we'll have someone overseeing it, managing it. So we'll be driven more by jobs, by looking for jobs and finding jobs, um, online. But then we'll also provide, every time someone goes on there, we'll provide, um, um, a, uh, something that will come up that says that if you need help with your resume, or you want to work as, or, um, interview skills or so, we, we have an avail, we, we have, we provide that service, and here's the number, or click on this, whatever the case may be. So John will still keep doing that, and he has seen more of that here recently, went real quiet right after COVID. Um, well, at the end of COVID, it hit, nobody coming in hardly, and we actually cut back his hours a little bit, and now it's picking back up again, um, where he's getting, you know, set, he's getting a couple appointments a week now rather than the other, the other way it was, where it was hardly anything. Um, all right, so that's that. Only other thing is, Paul, what do you, what did we do on the, uh, did we pay off the road? The road bridge pay off their debt now? Did we complete that?
You haven't answered me.
I didn't answer you? Thought I answered you and said, yeah.
I, unless it was something I hadn't seen yet today.
So I'm answering him right now and saying, go ahead. The, uh, Roden Bridge has significant reserves that they can pay off their, their, um, their loan that the town, that the town fund made to them so they could redo the roads, uh, upgrade the roads, um, a couple years ago. And we can, we can, they can pay off their debt, uh, in a final, final payment here, a little over a hundred thousand or so. And that will go into our reserves for the town fund. That can be applied then to the programs and to the, uh, and to the, uh, construction issues. So that will be, you know, then the Roden Bridge will be debt-free at that point too. And as you know, um, that is, the Roden Bridge is now the responsibility of the supervisor of the board, and that is all contracted out, no IGA's or contracts. And, and then Art is our field rep. Art Nierdowski is our field rep on a part-time basis who kind of oversees it, makes sure everything's going right. So, how about Art? Talk to him. Is there anything, any, any questions regarding my report or any other? Is there anything, any, any questions regarding my report or any other issues? Yeah?
Quick question on the website. Is there going to be a function where clients can make appointments, like a portal where they can make appointments, access their, uh, therapy records, things of that nature?
No, I don't think, I don't think we're giving them access to the records. They would have to request that. And appointments, I think they, what they indicate is they prefer to have them call in so they can qual, qualify them, um, uh, before they set up, they set up the appointment. But what there will be is there will be a, um, there will be all the information about what services are available, the phone number will be on there, all that information will be. And, and that, that's something that when they present the, when we do the presentation, that's something, you know, if you think it should, something should be on there, and we don't have to redo the whole thing. Yeah, I mean, let's, that's, that, that's, you know, there's little things that, that sometimes you don't think of, and when you're looking at the bigger picture, and you guys may, may see something that would be more convenient or is just missing that should be there. But that's, though, I, I don't believe we have that at this time, and you could ask that question at that. I don't think it would be too hard to add that if they had, if they wanted to. Any other questions? Okay, um, then we have, uh, can we get a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
All right, there's no old business, so we'll go to the new business. Uh, first item is the acceptance of the annual audit for fiscal year, uh, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Is the motion to approve, motion to second?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded. Um, any discussion on that? That's pretty, I mean, that's nice. We, we've been consistently getting clean audits for, as far as I can remember, and Eric has done a really nice job on that, and, um, and, um, I, I'm just really, really pleased because that's, that's, that's an area where you just don't want problems, and, and she has done a very, very good job. So I will let, I will, I, on behalf of the board, I will thank her for her work. Yeah?
Quick question. How do we decide on the auditor who audits the township?
Yeah, we've, we've had the same auditor now for, we usually wanna rotate every so many years, but we've, how long have we, how long have we had, uh, WIPF?
Uh, probably, uh, five or six.
And we usually like to switch at five years.
They're done, this was their last audit.
Okay. So.
That was my next question.
Yeah. Usually about five years. I think we may be a year over that, it could be.
I, they, they weren't here when I got here.
Yeah, in any case, we decided it was time to, to change. Just, we should, that's just good business practice. Okay? And we'll, um, we'll come to the board with a recommendation for a new auditor, and then the board has to approve it. Okay, um, item, uh, so, uh, we have a motion to approve the, uh, the annual audit. Um, there is no further, if there's no-
Accept, I believe is the term.
Pardon?
Accept.
To accept, I'm sorry, to accept the, the annual audit report. It's been second, uh, the motion's been made and seconded. Uh, there's no further discussion, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Um, okay, now ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three, three designates the FOIA officer and adopts rules and regulations, um, and adopting rules and regulations under, uh, the FOIA Act. This is, Paul, we do this annually?
What's that?
The, uh, designation of the FOIA officer needs to be done annually?
Not, do mine now leave?
I thought we had to do that, because we have a FOIA individual, we have a FOIA already. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're doing this again.
Well, but this is an ordinance that we didn't have previously that had some teeth to it.
All right.
We didn't have anything in writing previously.
Okay.
So I asked Jason to put this together.
All right, understand. All right, so this is an ordinance, uh, that goes, we've been designating a FOIA, that's what caught my, cause I know we've been designating FOIA, and I didn't realize this is an ordinance that we, that was required by state law to have in place. Um, and, um, I think you've seen, seen the ordinance. I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary there. So can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we, just so you know too, this is, um, the FOIA is another important, important job, because there's some, a lot of eagle, uh, legal issues that go with this, and there are some groups that are just, um, that you find are just very, very aggressive in terms of what, what they want and how they want it, um, and very expansive in what they want, you know, and what they don't want. And there's certain rules and regulations that follow, so it becomes a very significant task for the clerk and for the, um, the administrator, um, who are the, usually the FOIA officers. And we've had a number here recently that are requesting very broad amounts of, of information, um, and I, I, yeah, sometimes they're watchdog groups, and sometimes we don't know who they are, what they're doing. But we have to provide it unless it falls under certain categories, um, and, um, that's not that often. So, um, okay, the, um, the, um, the, we, that's it, that, we have a motion, we have to vote on that. Let's have, um, let's, uh, have a roll call vote.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
All right, and then the last is resolution twenty twenty-three, four, uh, that's to declare certain town fund and road department personnel property a surplus. Paul, would you, um, just say a few words about our last, the last auction that we did, what the results were?
Sure. We had, um, we had, um, quite a number of, uh, items that we decided that, uh, we didn't need any longer, that the board had approved for a surplus. Um, we had a cargo van, uh, that sold for a good amount of money, I think it was over five thousand dollars. We had, uh, a chipper that was the most expensive item of the day. Then there were a lot of, uh, weed whackers and tree trimmers and things like that, little pieces that were out there. Uh, we also had an old welder that must've been about a hundred years old that we got rid of. Um, just a lot of things like that. The total came to over twenty thousand dollars. So that would go into the, uh, highway department's account, which would just help them pay us back, so.
Okay, and would you mention what we're doing, I mean, explain kinda what we're doing now with the, uh?
What we're doing now is the, um, the, what you see on the list, I went around and looked at the items that we still had that we didn't get the first time around, because they were, uh, not as important. But, uh, you'll see there's a, a truck on there, there's two buses, uh, there's a metal desk, uh, saws, all sorts of hand tools, um, that are out there, and there's some huge pipes. Some of them are round, some of them are the ones that have, uh, the holes in them where, you know, it's a, a street sign where people put that up, and then you put the pin through it to hold whatever you're putting in there. We've got a ton of those there, once we don't have a road department anymore. If there are any signs that'll have to be changed in the unincorporated area, we're gonna hire somebody to do it anyway, so they can bring the material with them. We can get rid of the stuff that we have, cause I don't see us, me getting up on somebody's shoulder and pounding that thing into the ground. They're twelve feet long, so, and I don't think we have the equipment to cut them anymore either, so we got rid of some of those things previously.
Can you explain a little bit more on the, uh, on the, uh, the pickup truck and maybe even the bus expand on what I had said?
Whether it was the second one?
The buses and the, the pickup truck, just why we're getting rid of those.
Well, the pickup truck doesn't run at this point in time, and we don't know, I mean, I think it could be a battery or whatever, but it's, people that have come in and looked at it, just when they were here to look at the other stuff, said that, you know, if they have people, if somebody wanted to purchase that, that had a mechanic that worked at their facility, like a municipality or township or whatever, they may be able to fix it, may be good for them. So that's why we just wanted to put it out there, because somebody can use it, but we don't have a use for it. We don't need it. We have one pickup truck that does the pile act, that use, that Art uses to do the plowing for the, um, parking lots now, and we don't need that other truck. So that's, that's for that. As far as the two buses go, they're, they're old. One of them was a special-built, uh, bus, it was a twenty-four-passenger bus, and every time we take that in, it's very costly because it was, you know, modified when it was being built. So it, it, it always costs us more money. So it's on its, end of its life as well. And, um, the other one that we have is, is a workhorse, but it has a lot of bodywork to it, and George wants to fix it up before we put it out there on the road, so we're just gonna get rid of it and be done with it. So, uh, so that's, I mean, which was right, I mean, because it is an older bus. They say it, that it runs very well, and it's, it's competent, but it's been around a long time. I mean, it's, uh, uh, ten years, I'm sorry, that's not the point. Uh, it's, uh, eleven years old, and it's got a lot of miles on it, so. Those are the reasons for the main things. The other stuff's just small items. We sell them, we sell them, whatever we get out of them, it's more than what we have. So.
I'm glad we're getting rid of the flammable cabinets.
Yes.
What's that?
I'm glad we're getting rid of the flammable cabinets.
Yeah, we, well, they call it, it's kinda crazy, they call them flammable, but you put your, I guess, whatever is flammable in that cabinet, it's supposed to be, it's airtight, I believe, or, you know, they can't.
We used to store backups.
Huh?
We used to store computer backups in them to keep them safe.
Interesting.
So I, I think on the, on the vehicles, which is probably the most important thing, uh, the pickup is, we don't need, and it doesn't hardly run, and we just don't wanna put the money and time into fixing it up. So I would rather dispose of that, and if, if, if the situation arose again where we want a pickup, then at that point we can address it and get, uh, one that's in better shape and fits our needs.
I've been looking for one already, for, so, you know, we talked about that a long time ago.
Yeah, a long time.
Where we bought the food pantry truck through Penske Used Vehicles, and we got a good deal on it, and it's still running very well. Um, we've had it for probably about three, four, five years now. Um, so I'm always looking for a smaller one, because we talked about a, a vehicle that Kaylee or the food pantry could take out when they got, when they were receiving smaller donations, as opposed to taking the big sixteen-foot box truck, you know, out there. No, no need to do that.
So we would, um, you know, if we, if we feel we need that, or if a, a deal comes on that's very attractive, then we'll, we'll visit it again. On the buses, um, I, I just have been very adamant there, and I would, I would think you guys would be agree that, um, if we're out in the community, um, on one hand, and we're drive investors, I want them to look.
Yes.
I want them to look safe, I want them to look good, I, I want it, it's a reflection of the township. And the second thing is, I don't wanna shortchange anything in terms of safety. And at some point, um, these buses don't look good, or at some point their mileage is soft, and the repairs we've had to do begins to run into question, run, bring into question their, their safety, and that's just not something we wanna, we want any of our residents to have to deal with. Okay? And, and like I said, I mean, the, the, we're doing a lot of driving, and, um, and we, that's why we're looking for a part-time driver, and we wanna get now into a cycle where we're bringing on a new bus every two, two and a half years or so, so we keep the, uh, the, the fleet relatively new. Okay, um, so anyway, that's the, the, the resolution twenty twenty-three, oh, four, uh, is to declare certain town funds and road department personnel, uh, property as surplus. Sorry, did I get us first and a second on that? Can I get a, a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, you go ahead and roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye.
Okay, um, we have, uh, a discussion, a comments from the trustees. The trustees, you guys have any comments or questions or suggestions or anything jump out at you at all that we should be addressing? I, I know a lot of you guys are good about just talking to me offhand, if, I mean, out of the meetings, if there's something, have to do it one-on-one, cause the old meeting act, but, um, about things that are, you're, you're thinking about or concerned about, but it's also, you have an option, you have a, a time here too to also address or bring up anything that you feel is appropriate.
I know, can we bring back the, uh, liaisons from our, uh, partnerships like we used to do, the reports?
Well, that's a, that's an interesting point. I mean, what Dale's saying is that, and this is something that Agency Grant Committee maybe can address, would be, should address, that'd be good. We used to have a liaison for the major agencies we worked with. I was a liaison, and I would go to the board meetings for Kenneth Young. Um, I also, at one time, did it for Journey From Pads to Hope. Um, I think some of the others were on different, did, did other, other, other boards, but these are usually the charitable organizations or the agencies that were our, that we, that we gave substantial amounts, the money to, and we had a liaison, um, to, um, to make sure that our, the money's being spent the way we wanted, but also to, um, to be very cognizant and aware of, of, of what they, what their services were and, 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 and in the long term, how could we be more, more help to them? So would, I guess what Dale would be saying and what the, the Agency Grant Committee could look at, um, identify maybe a couple, um, agencies where it would be advantageous for us, where it would be advantageous for us to, uh, to maybe ask for a volunteer to be a liaison to the board. I found, I found the, the Kenneth Young was, was very, very, very beneficial both for me in terms of our relationship with them, but also in understanding what they were doing in the community and how they were doing it, and what our money was being, what our grants were being used for.
Especially them, cause they were a big one.
Pardon? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but couldn't we have them come here, give the reports?
No, for the liaison, well, but you said liaison. The liaisons we had were we would, we would assign people.
Well, I'm talking about them having the liaison coming here.
Well, that was, then that's a different issue, yeah.
Yeah, and we did used to do that, and I think it is nice with some of the bigger agencies, you know, I mean, sometimes we have a department doing a, a report, but we could have some of our bigger agencies come if you wanted and do a report.
Haven't you been doing, I mean, I thought we've been having maybe in new groups, is it new groups we've been having come in?
Well, for the, for the, um, committee, yeah. We, we're trying now for the committee, we have about thirty agencies and a few new ones every year apply, so we're trying to do ten agencies each year come meet with the committee. So we have a cycle where we see them every three years. But we could also have, like, Kenneth Young come do a presentation here sometime during a board meeting, which would help everyone understand more what their, their, um-
Okay. Well, I think those are, I mean, obviously you're doing with your committee, but maybe for the board, you know, your committee can, can take a look at having whatever boards you think is appropriate or would be advantageous to come present to the, to the board, and then also, if there's any, do you think it would be beneficial for us to ask for a volunteer to be a liaison to the board?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, and you guys can make a recommendation on that, and, um, can also kind of maybe fill around to see if anyone would really be interested in doing that too.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I think we're, like I said, we're still looking for another member for the Agency Grant Committee, um, and, um, and we're, I think we're, 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 we're also, um, looking, um, at, at some, some point, well, we're looking, with the decennial, I think there's a, there's a number of things that could come out of that too that we should be hopefully paying attention to. And I, I didn't, I didn't ask anything like that, but just as, maybe I ask, uh, for, uh, Brian and Dick, how's that, how is that going from your different groups?
I think we're making progress, and we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday?
Thursday.
Second meeting.
Okay, are you getting good input and stuff like that?
We are, we are, so I think we'll have some good recommendations.
Okay, good.
So I think it's a, I think it's a good process, helpful process.
Yeah, yeah, no, it helps us look at things maybe we just wouldn't think about otherwise, yeah. Dick, how's your, anything?
Yeah, we have to, we have to schedule a meeting, but no, I think, you know, it's interesting when you're talking about all the stuff that we're doing down there, all this new stuff they're doing and stuff, it's, it's kind of like, you know, you were talking earlier about, you've talked in the past about all these things that we, you know, what could make us better and stuff, and we're putting those into play, I mean, already, you know, so that's kind of good, that'll all be reflected on our report.
Well, it'd be helpful if there's things that we've mentioned that we're looking at, if the, if the committees say in their, yeah, this is something we like, or if they say, you know, you know, I find out something I'm talking about, they don't think would make sense, those are, you know, that's a, that's where we're looking for fresh thoughts and, or a, 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 a back check, so to speak, on how we're thinking.
Yeah, I think it's even helpful to explore options that we ultimately decide against it, and, you know, we can at least represent to the community.
Yeah.
You know, we thought about this, and we decided that it's, it's not in the best interest of.
And I don't think any of these ideas that you may be bringing forward, you shouldn't, I mean, as long as it's reasonably reasonable, there's no reason to not to bring it forward, and we can say, no, it's just something we can't do, but we, there's no reason we can't hear about these things, regardless of what they are. Okay, anything else?
It should do it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, we adjourn.